Okay, call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could, please remain standing for a minute in memory of past former Planning Board member and distinguished member of the Riverhead Farming Community, Lyle Wells, who passed away suddenly last week. Okay, welcome to the February 1st, 2018 Town of Riverhead Planning Board meeting. First item on our agenda tonight is a discussion item for AT&amp;T at 201 Fresh Pond Avenue.
All right. I don't have the applicant here. They are coming from Jersey. And for these administrative applications for these wireless equipment replacements, I just didn't find it pertinent to have them here. But I'm just going to present to you real quick that we received an administrative site plan application that proposes to modify an existing wireless communications tower. It involves replacing four antennas, three RRH units, remove six microwave dish antennas and replace associated equipments and cables. The site is a 0.9 acre site located on the west side of Fresh Pond Avenue in Calverton, approximately 4,100 feet north of Middle Country Road. The existing communications facility is the sole improvement on the property. Consists of 125-foot tall guide tower and ground-mounted equipment, all contained within a 9,800 square foot compound with a chain link fence around it. Received plant, it's a, it was an unlisted action. Staff recommends that the planning board assume lead agency without the need for coordinated review. And staff recommends a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA. There are no additional ground-mounted equipment as part of this application, no new generators, no new equipment enclosures or anything that's going to create any kind of noise or disturbance. We received a structural analysis prepared and stamped by a professional engineer which indicates that the existing tower will meet the requirements to sustain the load from the new equipment. We've also received an RF exposure analysis report, and that report analyzed existing equipment as well as the proposed, and it showed that it's well below the maximum permitted exposure levels as established by the FCC. As a standard with these administrative cell phone towers, the town engineer has required a post-construction analysis performed by a professional engineer to show that the work conformed to the approved plans.
Okay, so we've gotten pretty well-rounded on these cell tower expansions. So as long as the compliance report is all in order and the structural is stamped by a PE, I'm fine with it. Any questions from the board? No?
The only question I had was the structural. You answered it.
Yeah, and I do have it on for an administrative approval in this, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Mison Residence Office Conversion. Can you just state your name for us on the record?
My name is Brooke Epperson, and I represent the owner of the property.
All right. So what we've got here is a site plan application to convert an existing single-family residence into a mixed-use building with a mental health professional office on the first floor and continued residential use on the second floor. The site plan is proposing to add about 4,000 square feet of impervious asphalt parking area, handicap access ramps, lighting and landscaping improvements, as well as a six-foot stockade fence around the western, northern, and eastern property boundaries. The subject location is a 0.3 acre parcel. It's located on the north side of Main Road in Aquabog, across from the intersection of Colonial Drive and Main Road. It's located within the agricultural protection zone. Professional offices in operating in converted single-family residences are a specially permitted use by permit of the Town Board within the APZ. SECRA analysis was done on the project. It was considered to be a type II action, so there's no further environmental review required. Getting down to some of the details of the site plan, the site plan is proposing to utilize the existing curb cut off of Main Road as access to and from the site. The application was referred to State DOT, and we did receive comments from the DOT that they will need to reconstruct the apron, as well as replace the sidewalk along the frontage of the property. In terms of the access to the site and the driveway, staff has identified a potential choke point. The driveway is only proposed at 12 feet wide, which would present an issue if there was cars coming in and out of the site at the same time, where they may would have to back up onto Main Road. So staff would recommend that the curb cut should be widened, and this access driveway should be widened to the maximum extent practicable. In terms of the parking, the site plan is proposing the parking area into the northern portion of the site behind the existing building. The calculations that they've provided for a medical office are accurate. The only recommendation, you know, looking forward into the future is that they were calculated at, calculated using office space. If some point in the future, the site wanted to be used as a medical office, the requirement for parking on a medical office is slightly more. In the future, if the applicant wants to redesign the project to add an additional parking space, that would eliminate the need for them to come back for further site plan review if it wanted to be converted to an actual medical office.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
Yeah. Now, there's one parking spot on the site plan, which I refer to as the satellite parking space, which is at a 90-degree angle to the rest of the banked parking. Staff recommends this space be eliminated as it could just pose a safety hazard, people backing into it. You know, the parking spaces should really all just be in line. It would be the most efficient way to park the property. The traffic flow on the site, I spoke about that. That's really one of the main issues with this site plan. Now, because this application is also pending on a special permit with the Town Board, we actually had a, I presented this application to the Town Board this morning. The question of traffic flow and required buffers was an issue that was raised with the Town Board. Town code requires at any time a business or commercial use adjoins a residential use, it requires a 10-foot buffer of evergreen plantings. Now, on that access along the western side, being that it's already extremely narrow, I asked the Town Board if they felt the six-foot fence was appropriate. The Town Board said that they, you know, being that the area is residential, they would like to see that extra, they would like to see that 10-foot buffer installed. So that's going to require some significant redesign of the project. You know, we're kind of contemplating the idea of having traffic flow in from the western side and then loop around and have a loop to where it would exit from the eastern side. The proposed landscaping on the plan, they're proposing Hollywood junipers along the front edge with Main Road. I saw this could be a potential safety hazard with people exiting the site. Those junipers, you know, will obscure, effectively obscure the view of someone walking along the sidewalk. So I'd recommend that they should install street trees, which will allow visibility for people exiting or entering the site. The existing vegetation around the base of the house is also very minimal. Staff recommends that there should be increased landscaping around the house. I looked at the lighting. All of the lighting is going to be dark sky compliant, 3,000-degree temperature fixtures, all mounted at appropriate heights. Again, as per DOT comments, the sidewalk will need to be replaced along the front edge to a minimum of five foot width. Now, on the staff report, I did the best I could to try to illustrate, there's an issue with the parcel to the west. On page seven of the site plan, I'm sorry, on page seven of the staff report, I kind of highlighted the area. The parcel to the west seems to have kind of been utilizing kind of a driveway to get to the back of his own property. As you can see, that driveway is kind of impeded onto the subject parcel. Now, that driveway, they're proposing a fence on that property, so that may come up, you know, at the public hearing at some point. Just felt the board should be aware of that.
Have you approached the neighbor to the west about that?
No, not yet.
Before you come back here, you have to do that.
There were some issues with the floor plans, just to clarify, the use of some of the existing rooms, indicate what the reuse of each room will be, and should indicate whether or not the kitchen on the first floor will be removed. We've got some comments from the building department, which I'm not really going to, I'm not going to go through and read everyone. State DOT comments we got, we're waiting for a title report. We've received comments from the Suffolk County Planning Commission. They considered it to be a matter for local determination, and we're waiting for Fire Marshal comments.
If they were, if the applicant was, had their mindset on the junipers in the front, I don't have a problem with it if they have to be set back. Too close to the road, somebody pulling it out, once they grow a little bit, you're going to have a bad vision problem there.
What does the rest of the board feel in terms of the landscape along the front?
Is there a need to go to the health department?
They will have to go to the health department. It's going to be a, you know, they're going to be required to upgrade the sanitary system, so yes, they will have to go to the health department. What was the rest of the board's opinion on the landscaping along the front, street trees, or are you okay with the junipers?
Those junipers, they grow pretty rapidly, don't they? And they spread out. So even if you set them back and they look good today, five years from now, they could be a problem, right?
The one thing about the street trees is that, you know, you can see under the canopy.
Right. So Greg, if you could just, what was the Town Board's recommendation with the border, the setback?
Yeah, so along that western, in short, the Town Board wanted to see the 10-foot evergreen buffer on both the eastern and the western side of the property.
And then have the fence on the inside of it.
Yeah, and have the fence as well. You know, they felt that being, you know, the people to the east and west bought in a residential neighborhood, they didn't expect the commercial traffic. So they'll have to, the applicant will have to redesign the project with that 10-foot buffer on either side. Now, the issue that poses is you've got very small setbacks on the east and west. You've got 24 feet on the west, 26 feet on the east. So to have a 10-foot buffer and then try to expect to have two-way traffic on a 14-foot, it won't work. So we'll have to, the applicant will have to redesign, like I said, maybe if they just kind of loop around the other side of the building.
Landscaping, you first you maintain 10 feet, then you put the landscaping?
No, the landscaping is within the 10-foot buffer. So you'd have your, the fence, 10-foot buffer with evergreens, and then your, you know, traffic areas.
Where does the driveway line up in relation to Colonial Drive?
It's pretty much right across the street.
Right across?
Yeah.
And the state didn't comment or take any exception to that?
No.
Okay.
And how many spots, Greg, are they allowing on this project?
Um, right now, the, including that satellite space, they're proposing six parking spaces.
And they'll be able to get that to the rear of this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't think, I mean, there's sufficient room, sufficient room to move that satellite parking space, and then even to provide one extra parking space for, you know, any future conversion to a true medical office.
The problem lies is, you know, you have to put an access aisle into it, you're probably going to lose two parking spaces.
No.
That shed going to remain?
Excuse me?
Is the shed going to remain?
As of right now, the shed's going to remain. Through redesign, the shed may need to be relocated or removed. There actually is a detached garage on the, existing on the site that is going to be removed. That's kind of shown as the dotted line along the western portion of the property. Now, we also would like to bring to the board's attention, and get your blessing, the applicant through the architect has informed us that they would like to perform the work to the building itself. I believe the owner wants to either move herself in there or move a tenant in there to try to make some money while they're going through the, while they're going through the site plan and special permit approvals. We inform the Town Board of that. The Town Board was okay with them doing the work to the building, no site work being performed.
Only the residential portion.
Yeah, only, yeah, only the residential portion.
So only upstairs?
The architect can explain what they want to do on the house.
So the renovation to the actual house that has a dormer on the western side right now, and we would mirror that over to the, to give more headroom and floor area to the second floor, keep the kitchen in the first floor, and build a larger bathroom on the first floor. So that would be the residential part, and keep the bedrooms on the first floor until after we go through all the permits and get through the process, then it would turn into the health professional office.
So they could still keep it, even if the application dies or gets denied, it would still be residential design?
Correct.
Now, my only, and I brought this up to the Town Board, because we have a pending site plan application, I would think would be the best practice, it will be referred to the ARP. So prior to the building department issuing any building permits, we would want to get the Architectural Review Board's comments on it. Just feel like that's appropriate.
The office is going to be upstairs?
Downstairs.
Downstairs. The residence is going to be upstairs, but the kitchen's going to be downstairs.
If we can go forward with just the residential construction, we would keep the kitchen as is on the first floor, and then once-
Until you had it approved?
Yeah, until we had all the approvals, we would then do the second floor kitchen.
And the board was not aware of it, and I believe you are, the code says they can't do any work while there's a pending application before the board. So that's why they have to get permission from you to do any interior operation before Brad gives them a building permit.
What the use is going to be for-
Just residential.
Residential. But the bathroom, you're going to do on the first floor, you said?
Yes.
For the second floor use?
We would add a bathroom to the second floor for the first phase, keep the one that's downstairs. Right now, it only has the one.
What would happen to the one on the first floor if the second phase happened?
It would remain the same. It's, right now, it's pretty tiny and it has a bathtub in it. We're proposing to take the tub out and make it handicap accessible. So that would be for the future health professional office use.
So that's one thing that, this is kind of unusual, we're looking to get guidance from the board tonight, so whether or not they can even make the application to Brad and the building department. I don't think you're sure.
No, I don't either. I don't. Do you, we don't take an issue with them continuing as a residence while it goes forward?
Did the board have any other questions?
So just, so we can go-
Trees, what, what do you say?
Oh, the junipers, well, I mean, yeah, I think street trees, I mean, just to allow for future. It is a busy road.
Do we know the speed limit is through there?
So being that this requires a special permit, the applicant's going to have to have a public hearing with the Town Board and with the planning board, then we would give a recommendation to the Town Board towards a special permit, and then depending on public comment, we would have a vote on the revised site plan.
Yeah, I feel it would be the best, you know, hammer out the actual site design issues here with the planning department. Once the planning board is satisfied with the design and the layout and the traffic flow and all the safety issues, issue the recommendation to the Town Board.
We're going to hold off on any public hearing until we get redesigned.
Right. That's the first step, but then going forward. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Long Island Sports Park.
Good evening, Charles Cuddy for the applicant. With me tonight is Doug Adams of Young &amp; Young, and also Dean Del Pritti, who's the principal of Long Island Sports Park LLC. This is a site you're familiar with because it's the old Calverton Link site. It's 82 acres that were the first 12 holes. There's nothing that's been altered on this site. In other words, you go in the road, it's the same road that was accessible before. The land looks virtually the same. What's here is recreational uses that are allowed in the industrial seed district. And so what they're doing is they're having some golf played, they're having what they call frisbee golf, they're having soccer golf, they have mini golf course that was there, as good as used. They also do paintball, and they do runs, and various organizations come there for like arts and crafts type of thing. Basically, what they're doing is taking the site, and if you look at the plan, and using the same site that's been there, they have 193 parking spaces, so they don't need, for these events, they don't need more parking. But since they're new uses, the town has decided through the planning department that we should make a site plan application, and that's what we're doing, and that's what we're here for. So if you have questions about what they're doing, both Mr. Adams and Mr. Del Pritti can answer those. I think, though, that you have a pretty good idea of what golf and frisbee and other things are, and they conduct runs. I know that there's a SECRA analysis being done, and I understand that once this board takes lead agency, we should get to a point where SECRA should be completed. At that point, hopefully, we can get approval, because we're, we want to continue the uses that are on this site plan.
Are they going to continue using irrigation systems?
No, they don't need any system particularly, no.
Well, they have a private well on the site, right?
Yeah, they do.
Do all the proposed uses, I don't know what you all have, but are all the proposed uses meeting the zoning code?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so the last time, I think it was back in August, we had, you had a work session?
Yes.
Right, and the notes that I see, some of the activities may exceed the sanitary flow. It was in my notes. Did we address what was going to happen to meet the sanitary codes?
I think Doug can answer that maybe better than I can.
Good evening. Yeah, we demonstrated on the site plan, we tried to spell out sort of a backing into what sanitary system is there.
Just your full name for the-
Doug Adams, engineer, Young &amp; Young. We took the existing systems that are there, that we actually were involved in designing when Calverton Link was active, and sort of backed into, you know, bringing all these sort of sub-recreational uses together to try to use the parking, use the other facilities that are there to come up with a flow that would maximize the existing system that's there. So that's what's demonstrated on the site plan.
Okay, so if you have like a big run or activities with, you know, a lot of people-
Right, so the calculations you see there sort of show, and I forget what the numbers are, for certain events, it might be a couple of hundred people could be supported with the sanitary system or, and/or the parking, and then anything over that, if there were to be an event that was larger than that capacity that we can handle on our own, we would just file a special permit, the event, the regular event, you know, codified.
Going to be catering? I see you grilled up here.
We believe we should be able to, similar to what customarily happens at any other golf course.
Can you visualize multiple activities going on?
Yeah, again, if you look at the way we spelled out some of the calculations here.
Yeah. No, I just mean an operation.
I'm sorry?
I just mean an operation, that the soccer could go on at the same time a run is going on, or mini golf is going on.
Well, if you look at the parking calculation, we show a few different scenarios where what activities would be taking place while hosting a run, for example, and what activities might be taking place while hosting a festival. And then with no runs or festivals, that's sort of the top third of the calculation.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone from the public have any comments on this application? Anyone from the public? Okay, thank you.
Make a motion that the public hearing for the Long Island Sports Park be closed, so moved.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Long Island Sports Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings are closed. Okay, next item on the agenda is Swank Albinsky Lot Line Modification.
Greg Bergman, Riverhead Planning Department. I will just be speaking about the application before us on behalf of Mr. Albinsky. The planning department has received a lot line modification application, which seeks to modify the lot line between two residential lots. The lot line modification will result in the conveyance of approximately 5,500 square feet of land between two adjoining owners. The lots are located within the RB80 zoning use district. This will not result in the creation of a new buildable lot, it will just convey a portion of property to Mr. Albinsky from his neighbor. Staff has done it, it's considered a type II application with no further environmental review required. Both lots right now are non-conforming in terms of size within the RB80 zoning district, so this application will require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. There were prior land conveyances on the property which resulted in the parcels existing as they do now. Suffolk County Planning Commission reviewed it and found it to be a matter for local determination. The proposed lot line modification will require approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services.
If Mr. Albinsky could just explain why, you know, the neighbors are looking to do this.
My name is Robert Albinsky, I live at 80 Park Street, Waiting River. There's several reasons why I chose to apply for this procedure. The one is that there's this mature and diseased trees on the property that seem to fall on real property and do damage, you know, during storms. That's one reason. The other reason is that I'd like to balance the property so that there'll be a buffer between my neighbor's property and myself. So by taking this 50-foot of property, I plan on initially to clear the diseased trees and establish a boundary tree line like exists on additional property I own on my parcel. That's pretty much what I would like to do. And in the future, there's always the possibility of putting a garage up, but that's not going to happen at this moment in time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public? Okay, thank you.
Motion-
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion, close public hearing for Swank Albinsky lot line modification.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to close the public hearing for Swank Albinsky lot line modification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, public hearings closed. Okay, before we vote on the resolutions, anyone from the public have any comments on the resolutions? Any comments on resolutions?
I just wanna bring up one comment on the record. For the John Reeve minor subdivision approval application, I got a request from the applicant's attorney requesting a small modification to the resolution. All it was, was at the, the last resolve where we're sending it, we're authorizing the clerk to send it to different entities, I listed Sandra Reeve as one of them, the applicant's attorney requested that that be changed to JNS Summer Cottage, to list the business as the recipient of the resolution rather than Ms. Reeve's personally.
Okay, any, any issue with that, Dick?
I think that would close it.
Okay, resolution number one.
Minor subdivision of Little Flower Children and Family Services, approve an extension of time for minor subdivision application to subdivide an existing fifteen-point acre parcel.
Second to motion. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand eighteen-seven for an extension of time for minor subdivision for Little Flower Children and Family Services. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number two on the agenda?
I'll move that we approve the extension for Reginald and Connie Far, excuse me, that first red, uh, extension, ninety days, a third extension, I should say, ninety days.
I'll second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand eighteen-eight for ninety-day extension, minor subdivision of Reginald and Connie Far. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number three on the agenda?
I'll move two thousand eighteen-zero-zero-nine, John Reeve minor subdivision with the changes that were put in to give a copy to the, to the cap, the-
The cottages.
The business.
The cottages as opposed to the, um, so move.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand eighteen-nine, as amended, for John Reeve minor subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number four on the agenda?
I'll move resolution number, number ten, which is approves a final site plan known for KJJ Construction, an addition of approximately twelve-hundred square feet for a fifteen-seat restaurant under twenty-five A in Waiting River.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand eighteen-ten for KJJ Construction, final site plan approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number five.
Resolution AT&amp;T Fresh Pond Avenue, to approve an administrative site plan application, modify an existing wireless communication tower.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand eighteen-eleven for AT&amp;T two oh one Fresh Pond Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Okay, anyone from the public have any comments on any matter in front of the planning board? Anyone from the public?
Make a motion to move the minutes of the January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen planning board meeting, so moved.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of January eighteenth, twenty eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, the next meeting will be February fifteenth, work session at three PM. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one item. After the work session on February fifteenth, there's gonna be the tribe board meeting.
Yes.
That's gonna start at five-thirty PM, and one thing I'd like to ask the board to do is consider any sort of issues that you have that you can bring to discussion. Just a couple of things I have to offer, one is the coordination between the boards. We're now seeing applications that require a special permit, site plan from you, and also the zoning board of appeals, and the coordination and communication between the boards is absolutely critical, so whatever we can do to further that, that would be a plus. The second one is, and Joe and I were talking about tonight, any better way to track applications? The, doing it by word and by memory is, it's antiquated, and it's gonna cost approximately seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars to get the same computers or software system that the building department has to track their applications, and what all of that requires is, find and input the data, you can track it, where it is in the stage, and you'll know by looking at it that if we haven't gotten anything back from applicant in six months, we can just do that by looking at computer screen without having to go pull out a file and, you know, call a person back. It's instantaneous, and eventually we can have it online so that people can track them online to the computer, but doing it through word processing is, is out of date. And also, that ties into dead applications. We have applications that have been out there for ten years, and they keep dragging on and on and on. We need that computer tracking system to help, not just us.
Going on a sunset.
Yeah, sunset. So that would be the third thing, is, is we need to come up with either policy or a code that says if you haven't submitted anything to us in a year, two years, whatever it may be, the application is considered to be dead and you need to resubmit another application to us. So just a food for thought, for February fifteenth meeting.
What about parking? We've always discussed parking.
Downtown or townwide?
Downtown.
Yeah, we, we are heavily engaged in that subject with the supervisor office. The term pileup, not in terms of pileup of material, but pileup, P-I-L-O-P, payment in lieu of parking, is a hot topic. So just trying to establish what a fee is and what it's gonna be used for, is what's being deliberated on a weekly basis.
Okay, so we could talk about-
What we do is get some money.
We could bring it up at the meeting.
That's what the February fifteenth is all about.
Okay, so we'll be here February fifteenth.
What I can do in the meantime, between now and then, I did do an analysis of all the surrounding jurisdictions along Long Island to have a similar program. I'll, I'll email that, my, my findings to you about pileups.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a nice weekend, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.